It won't be.
But it was still long.
Like.
Like.
I mean, it would be.
Oh, you know, I think it would be.
It's.
Um.
In thirty three hundred and fifty.
It's one page paper.
Those are all the projects.
They're totally.
Well, different.
It's standing on your.
Yes.
Or the part of the else.
I'll try to share everything.
One of these shows up.
All.
I mean, I think.
Well, they have done a spare. Have jobs with their own.
We need it for a free payment.
That's the thing. See, that is transportation, you know. A lot of things they need to grow down here. It's like it's been.
You know, it's.
That's that's.
You know, I'm saying a lot of your.
Oh, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
He's operating that holiday. Okay.
How are you doing?
Yes, all.
Let me talk. Um.
Yeah. All right, folks, it is seven o'clock. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. If we can start with a moment of silence, please. We can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the great power of our Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a reminder, if you happen to have a cell phone on you, please make sure that it's either off or on silent. Danya, if you'll take a roll call for us, please.
Councilmember Williams.
Does it?
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Here.
Baller. David.
Here.
French.
Here.
Mary's writer.
Here. Do I have a motion to approve of the agenda?
Show move.
Support. Uh, favor say aye.
I have a.
Oh. To start this evening, we have a presentation from Mr. Harry Bonner, uh, the Youth Coalition. So, Mr. Bonner, the floor is yours.
Yes.
Hi.
Been a long time. Well, good hearing.
Mm hmm.
Uh, this is a very important page. Uh, for us. Uh, we are here for our future. And, uh, the science is in the newspaper. We need a lot of challenges that we all face for different reasons. Uh, I'm here to talk about something in twenty ten. Full marriage with the newborn eye. The thing about travel without. Twenty ten. This is twenty twenty four. Nice. So he goes back from twenty ten. You can auto change the power. Auto change their blowout.
People here.
So I buy as to help. Uh, the L P. Develop the skills to deal with the future that they go ahead. That's one of the reasons why we're creating this coalition, guys. Unfortunately, I don't know if I have any use of it. Possibly the models and all this. Uh, we have a surprise for people. Take it, ladies. I'm also here to. To get back to my which friend. Mr. Yeah, he cheated me. But now he needs it. Ah, so we carry him back house. So the marriage coalition, uh, the show that he made, uh. The former mayor, uh. And I'm Harry Bonner, he's a politician. All you've got, you know, most of you. Uh, you all about yourself, but it's not. And a lot of you not what got over. Part of it, you know. Which is driving a lot more.
Uh, yes.
And then I hope you're around a little while. But even coalition, after many conversations with, um. Eric's kind of here. Also, House of Representatives. Uh, it's started with one mystery. Help us, um. Probably just strongly. The need involving. You see that due correction. But you don't go on the job when you pay the price for it. And I tell you, so you won't be in that situation. But as I said, I want to turn it over to, uh, to the vice, which, uh, Andre Armstrong. That was all to us. And she should really. It's also a mother of our incoming, uh. The manager. And she can tell you about this. That would have been said. Appreciate all of you to be here. Um, okay. Hope the next year, obviously, you want me. And I said, um. And, um, we will both address that instead. Um, I know who the guys. I want to go first. Also, I want to say that I have. So first of all, some of the fires that I was surrendering. Right.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Armstrong. Um. Um, I've been in the community since I was born, so it's been a while. So I would like to read our mission statement for the mayor, the former mayor Joe Domingo and Dr. Harry J. Bonner, Mayor's Youth Council. We, the former mayor Joe Domingo and Dr. Harry J. Bonner, say here, Mayor Youth, Youth Council acts as a voice to the mayor of Albián and council members to plan a better future. Our purpose is organized to broaden youth leadership and city government, actively involve youth on policy issues, promote public awareness, strengths and abilities of youth. Learn about the functions of our city government and helping citizen habits for the future of community. The former mayor Joe Domingo and Dr. Harry J. Bonner, senior, Mayor's Youth Council consists of fifth through, fifth through twelfth grade students for Albián residents. Functions of the Youth Council will be advising the mayor, the city council, and community leaders on policy issues related to youth and families. Advise the school system, parents and community youth on policies and participate in specific youth projects. Represent youth and committee of the whole and city council meetings. Organize opportunities for youth to speak to the mayor and community leaders. Engage young people, city government, and community issues. Represent Albián youth at the local, state, and national government functions and events. Albián's youth are our greatest assets. They have a vision for a better world and a passion for making a difference. Our youth are involved in solutions too. We need our youth, uh, need from us adults, our, we need caring adults. They need challenge and support. Career guidance, after school programs, jobs, and desperately the opportunities to give a voice and technology. The future will be placed in your hands, no matter how we live it. And that was from Mayor Joe in two thousand anyway. And we also have a special presentation. So if Chief Kip or who's come forward.
This is required. I did this for my head. Sure.
So on behalf of the substance of youth prevention services, we would like to present for Dr. Harry J. Bonner, senior, outstanding law enforcement award in honor of Chief Scott Kip for your outstanding commitment, dedication, and leadership in protecting Albián community. This is from us and Dr. Harry J. Bonner, senior, Executive Director, two thousand and twenty four. So thank you. Here for our Youth Council. Uh, we have a senior and. Thank you, Jimmy. Better junior.
Hello, everybody. I, I used to be a really gamble. And, um, I want to introduce to you our new youth mayor. This is Ashton Ridley Melton and Timothy Pletcher. And they will, um, share things about themselves.
Hi, I am Ashley Ridley Melton. I am a senior at Marshall High School. At Marshall High School, I am the president of the National Honor Society, vice president of City Council, and I thought it was super significant advice.
And best.
Uh, I am Timothy Pletcher. I'm a junior at Marshall High School. I learned right. And I'm part of our student council.
So are we anticipating recruiting more students to get involved with this council?
Yeah.
Definitely, uh, it's going to be our students. So this will be a short notice. Uh, they'll come from the camp program with my quick look bros. They're coming from, uh, some of them, I noticed they're a good grade. Some of them are not a good grade. Um, our son and our kids right here. Definitely, there will be more students. So for the sake of time, we can hold to, um, around me with all of that. Right there. And in fact, to pit rise only thing about uh, the career that I've had, for people from you guys. Uh, it's gonna bother you, so we got to do it up more. Um, yeah. Uh, so my primary issue, we've been, um, at the starting of the merit of city organization, education, our school bonds have failed. I saw the soul of all of that kind of stuff like that. So we can go wide out and hopefully to, uh, clear it through that. Uh, we got students that, Marshall, you've got a many more folks who are the wonderful and the place to help them get their level. Go out to. Uh, he would be, uh, in those city, all of that. Now I'll tell you this. Mention me, not you. On a year from now, what has happened? When we stay here? And a year from now, say, do you see any change and transformation? What has been happening over the period? There's not a talk. Can we do it all? And there are few. It's the results. When we sit out here, say, if I'm on Marshall, that's the number two greatest student at Marshall College School. Not you, not number one, those are passionate and take. I think I have to be big, I'll come out. They could be a fair amount. They always do.
So is that?
So. I'm got the mission to survive. This was.
Good save, Harry.
Good save.
Sure.
All right, hundred percent.
I think that gets you out of hot water.
Yep.
But we'll be looking all over the missions, Dr. Frank. Jason here, all of them, state group. You know. I'll say you fly all the way forward. But there's a lot of different things here. A lot of different challenges to solve. If you have to face, we have to be bored with tests. There's more adults who are life history. Um, interns, no, that's, we've got a lot of complaints with the course of this year. So. I don't know what you got, any questions? So there's a population. But remember, twenty ten, we talked about transportation, our transportation information. That's when we came. He's twenty twenty four. We have a new president. I. Everybody. We think transportation is our. I'll tell you a film. You don't know it, you will. It was probably a change. Beautiful, very short part. Beautiful, beautiful part. I know, beautiful power part. Beautiful, the color part. After you need. Someone say this, I know everybody knows that. It was beautiful. All part of it. And. What else have you done with the measures of? Now we will be safe.
Thank you, Mr. Bonner. And I do look forward to working with your council. So whenever you all want to schedule a meeting, shoot me an email, give me a call. Be more than happy to sit down with you all to get this, get this ball rolling and so we can start working together. So thank you for being here today. All right, public comments. Um, if there's anybody in the gallery that would like to stand and address council in regards to an agenda item, you may do so at this time. Just come forward, give us your name and address, and three minutes is yours. You know, we will continue. Do I have a motion to approve of our consent calendar items?
Go move.
Support. New package, you have the minutes to our October twenty first study session and regular session minute in our over twenty ninth special meeting minute. Any adjustments needs to be made? All right, uh, favor say aye.
Yes.
opposed. And do I have a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty four oh nine?
So move. Support.
Attorney partners.
So as we discussed during the work session, this, um, is adopted by reference to international fire code. The international fire code is produced by the International Code Council. That's the same company that produces all the other codes. If we adopt by reference. Um, the current ordinance references, uh, the, uh, fire, National Fire Prevention Code, which was adopted in nineteen eighty four, but we haven't used it here in the city a long time. So, um, the most recent version of the international fire code is twenty twenty four. So since you're bringing us up to date, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for attorney partners? Eric, I'm Jackson.
Yes, um, calling as you will see into, uh, councilwoman, um. Davis, the updates, what was different from the past to the present? The updates that were inside of our.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's an entirely different code. So there's a lot of differences between the nineteen eighty four version of the National Fire Prevention, Prevention Code and the twenty twenty four international fire code. But this is the one that we've been using and enforcing for, and I'll defer to Scott on for how long.
It was two thousand and fifteen when John Tracy came to me and asked to switch to the international fire code. And I agreed, I thought we adopted it then. I don't know why it wasn't adopted at that point, so.
Okay. Thank you. We have a questions? Larry, pick a roll call first, please.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Baller.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
And Mary's writer.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve of the, um, contract for interim city manager?
So move.
Support. Mr. Terry is with us this evening. So, Mr. Terry, if you would like to come forward, um, and address council, I know the majority of the people here were not here at our study session. I'm sure they would like to get to know you a little bit better.
Again, uh, man or mayor, members of council, it's my pleasure. Uh, this. Hope I gave her to be here back as your term of saving years. Um, I have three R's, respect, restraint, and reverence. Uh, that's the creed I live by and govern my communities by. I look forward to working with a consultant in trying to attract a viable candidate who would plan on having a long-term commitment here in the city of Albián. And in that time period, we hope to find a candidate, um, that will fill those that need. I also want to work with staff to fill any gaps and utilize my forty-two years of experience developing Albián well. Um. Just again. My experience with Albián started when I was in eighth grade. And I'm sixty-seven, almost sixteen, we're both. So I'm very familiar with Albián and look forward to seeing Albián grow for the better. Uh, I think that Albián is a very, very community, an excellent community with a lot of good resources and most of all, biggest asset is, is citizens. So I look forward to working with them. I have no legal policy and I would hope that our citizens will utilize them. Welcome, any questions or comments, my elevator? And we hope that you will call me at any time. Please, your concerns. Thanks.
Yep. But I'm working with you. Our Albián college students are present. Um, our full-time city manager left. September.
Yes.
Yeah, so a full-time city manager left. And our chief has been sitting in as interim. Our chief is now retiring. Therefore, we need to hire in, uh, an interim city manager to kind of keep things moving. Without a city manager, a lot of things cannot get done with the city hall. Um, so it's very important that we have somebody that has that experience to kind of pick up the ball and run. Because chief has done it at the end of this week. So, uh, Mr. Terry has one week to get acclimated to our systems here, our personnel. Um, so I'm sure we're going to be seeing a lot of them around, uh, town, not only in city hall, but throughout the community. So we're, like you said, we're hoping to find somebody very qualified to take over this position as a full-time person. So we thank you, Mr. Terry, for being willing to fill in. All right, do we have any questions for attorney Hart with in regards to the language of the agreement? Amen. Danya, you can take roll call for us.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
And Mary's writer.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the purchase of the front-end loader?
So move.
Support. Deputy Chief Turner.
Evening, council. Um, as I said, for the study session, what we're looking to do is, our testing, Brian Lord is, you've come to find out it's way too small, which one? Uh, one of the things that we're going to be looking to, uh, to change. If the grant falls or this already falls for stuff as a. We will be able to renovate a lot of this on our home, using our home personnel, your home equipment. This fine seller will be that mass piece of equipment. We're going to use ourselves to turn it mostly in grease basement. Um. As I said before, we're about seventy-nine hundred hours right now. The current one we have, eight thousand hours is that last little sweet spot where we get a bit of it. Pulse are loose by. Um, I don't know when we're going to sell it, but if get a new one, you don't know if we'll sell it now or we'll sell it in spring. I'll kind of work with, uh, some of the vendors that we had failed to us. Also, we will put out there nationally through, uh, the machinery trader. Um, I'm watching that we can do, we just need to buy. So the thing I see with this front on order is, it's the things that we do with the front on order, it's maintaining the tree dump. Being able to turn the leaves over as required by even once a year. Every single pile that we have, we get a lot of leaves sitting. Um, also doing the renovations to the tree dump. Can I aid or do more because our front-end loader just got it up. I'll be very quick that. So outside of having, they have a bulldozer, we're able to do a half area. Which saves us a lot. So what I'm requesting to do is purchase the front motor. We've been tried out, like I said, several different manufacturers, put them through the test. The, the guys gave me a good equal test of all the manufacturers that we're looking at. And, uh, they paid for the caterpillar. Caterpillar in the industry also keeps the most resale value of all. We're looking to flip our equipment about five thousand hours or at seven years. So we want to try to get the best.
Do we have any questions for Deputy Chief Stan? Councilmember Williams.
Yep, I forgot to ask this earlier. The grappler attachment for the bucket, are we ordering that as well or no?
I don't pay those prices. I think I can just cheaper. And so I think I'm going to hold on that. Um, they want quite a bit of money, it's twenty-seven thousand dollars. I think we can hold on. Uh, we've got other pieces of equipment that we bought that help us. Um, so I think we can make it through the year and I think I can research it and come up with the batteries.
Okay.
Any other question? Any other questions? Councilmembers.
No.
All right, thank you, Deputy Chief, for the information. Sorry, if you have any questions.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Mary's sir.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve of the applications for boards and commissions? So move. Support. In our packets, we have applications for Hannah Isaacs, Holly McGlusey, and Harry Bonner, Jr. Um, I believe Harry is the only one here out of the three applicants. Mr. Bonner, if you would like to come forward, um, give us all a little information about yourself.
Exactly. Lay down.
Push it. Yeah, push it.
Is that better?
Oh.
Um, again, I'm Harry Bonner, Jr. Um, born and raised in Albián, uh, went away. Uh, work with young people a long time. I am currently, can you guys hear me still, all right?
Mm hmm.
Um, I'm currently at Harrington Elementary in a parent coordinator role. Um. I work with all the Harrington kids. The beautiful thing about it is, um, like I tell them all the time, I see you and I make sure they see me. I work with them every day. I work with the parents, um. Do a lot of after-school programming, um, with the youth, uh, pretty much sports right now, but, um, the focus is going to be on more on, um, other groups. Uh, social engagement groups and groups where, uh, young people learn how to deal with, uh, trauma, uh, social and emotional learning and other, other things. That's going to help them. Um. I've worked with kids thirty years. I did seventeen years at Stark Commonwealth. Um. I'm working at high school, elementary level. I've been working with kids a long time. So that's my passion and love. I'm sure I get it from my dad. So, um. I love kids, so. This is what I do, kind of a jack of all trades. I do a little bit of everything at the school. So kids all know me. Um, so I deal with them in a lot of, um, ways. So I don't know what else. Probably ask, so.
You can.
That's good.
And, uh, we welcome your experience and expertise on our reputation board as well.
Yeah, I look forward to it. Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
I think you will be a good addition.
I believe so, yes.
Councilmember David.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Mary's writer.
Yes. Next is our discussion on the Granger Waste Contract. In your packets, you have a copy of the contract that will carry us through to, I believe, twenty thirty. Um, Mayor Brandon Jackson, you had asked for this to be added to the agenda. So I'll turn the floor over to you.
Yes, I asked. Um, there's a lot of individuals wanting to know when we decided, which is not us that really decided, was Granger decided how they were going to start billing. People were used to the billing of the every three months. And then it turned out that they haven't have built every month. And so that's why I, um, asked for it to be at this meeting so people could get the gist of what was going on and what they had decided to change. Cause I'm quite sure we don't know it all.
And that, yeah, I don't, I, I don't have an answer to why they changed the billing, um, other than they're going to a monthly billing. It's not going to change your rates. It's just going to be spread out so that it would be a smaller payment per month rather than the three-month payment. Um, I. Obviously, they probably changed something in their billing process that they find this is easier. I don't think we had anything in the contract that described exactly how billing was going to be done. So just the amount.
Okay, well, that's good to know. So then we can tell them the same thing that you just told us.
Thank you.
Alvin, Chris.
I know we approved this, um, a number of years ago, but, um, as we are approaching the rapid end of leaf pickup,
There's still an awful lot of leaves that are gonna. Still be falling after their agreement, and so. I wonder if one of your final acts is acting city manager. You could ask them if we can get since, since Thanksgiving is late, we're basically missing a week. Um, and so. Is there a way for them to give us the first week of December as a leaf pickup week? Cause you know, I've. I'm putting ten to twelve bags out every week and, and not making a dent, so.
Yeah, we can look into it and see what we can do.
And maybe we could invest in a city in a fat truck. Then when you, so when are we gonna get leaf pickups?
When the council decides that.
Now go back to manpower.
Yeah. I don't know where we go with the other contractor we already have, so.
And I agree with um, um, French on that because um, out and walking, there was a lot of. Drains called and they asked about that.
Right.
And so we don't want that backup and they shouldn't have to go out and do all that, so. We did ask them to, you know, take and make sure that the leaves weren't on side or right there in that drain, so when they're raking that they move it off to the side, because otherwise they're gonna have.
And in this time of year, it's hard to tell because there's a lot of places where the, the residential rake, but they'll have somebody come pick it up, so it'll be sitting out by the curb for a few days, if not a week, and. So yeah, it's difficult to enforce right this minute, but.
Based on burn on the roads.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I mean, I know that when. I see a lot of residents out. Also breaking the curbsides too, because they, they don't wanna see flooding in the road, so.
Well, it is, it is actually my expectation.
Yes.
That if a leaf blows from. Into your curb area, you are responsible for it. So.
Yep.
So I guess we are talking with our constituents. We just.
Need to remind them that the curb side is also part of their responsibilities. Um, making sure that it's cleaned and picked up and bagged or in the recycle trash. Councilman Williams, do you have a question?
Yeah, um. The Maple Grove Apartments, has that been updated so that we're not. Continuing to pay for that? Sounds the same.
I, I believe that, that uh, if Jill was here, I think she could answer that, but I think they did contact Granger already about that.
Okay.
I do recall an email about that, but I think Jill took care of that first.
Councilor. Is there further information that's going to go to the public regarding? Um, the years, let's see, first year, second year, third year, and things like that in terms of the, the billing cycle? As, as well as the explanation of the. The years that have been identified.
Um, I believe this is public on the, on the city website. Um, you can pull it up and look at it. But I don't know. As far as getting that information to them. What? What you're referring to.
We're giving it bill every month, so.
Well, they're getting.
So obviously.
Well. Okay, we can add it to websites and things like that on the official council level as well.
Yep.
Alright, um. Do I have a motion to approve of the stopper plaza repairs?
I'm moved.
Support. Director.
Good evening, Council. Uh. We are again. With this, uh, I guess when we think the lights getting closer to being done, it's time to. I handed out. The uh, photos, kind of where we're at with everything. We're hoping that this week we'll have the uh, teaching well under control. Once that's done, we can then pass straight on taking out soccer by itself. Rest of the way. Um. The reason we're taking out soccer class is because there's so many boys, sinkholes underneath. Uh, several of you will come out and take a look at it. Who greatly appreciate you doing that. Uh. To actually see for yourselves how bad it really is down through there. Um. So with this, like I said, we're with the demolition of stopper class itself and all the construction thus far, we're about. Two ten, two twenty, somewhere around there. Uh, that's with all the curves, all new pipe, all new storm servers. Uh, going out and we've been rerouted, going out into the Hills River. With this newest.
Hiccup.
Addition. To this. Disaster, uh, we're looking at about thirty thousand dollars. New twelve inch. Uh, cement fighting from the fountain area of all the river. We're actually tying into a. What we think was the sanitarium system. Fight that just left in the wall. Twelve inch. So. Um. Once this is done, then the contractor is gonna come in and back here. Spring all in on the top soil. They'll seed it with grass and turn it immediately into grass and rain here and now. Until we get the grants to do the, the rest of the renovations. With that, taking some, we had the public safety drone one up and taken photos of this whole thing. We've come up with a design for it that we're gonna be the PDA tomorrow and review with them. We're gonna have an engineer, a fitness, gonna put everything together. Put it in a cash line and we'll present it to you all for approval before we submit the grant for the grant. Ask me turn it in for. We're trying to move on to it.
We're gonna continue to put pictures. I think I, I got a lot of feedback. I, I, I think I saw ten, about ten thousand uh, views on Facebook. From all the pictures that we've been posting lately, so it's nice to see that people are actually going through and looking at. You know.
They're happy that we're. Making it look better. So. Look at this.
I'd just like to say thank you. They have done a fantastic job.
I do appreciate um, the pace that much the work is happening because. Over the weekends when I'm in that area, I notice that people are still. Walking around there and I know that it can be dangerous, so we definitely don't wanna have. Liability of somebody getting hurt, so I do appreciate you guys' diligent work and all of this. Appreciate the information.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for you to? Right, thank you. And you can take roll call first, please.
Um.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
There's an increase. He said a thirty thousand dollars. I don't know if you wanna make a motion to increase that before we.
I would move we've increased that number to two hundred and fifty thousand to accommodate the additional thirty thousand or so dollars to.
Support.
Council member Davis.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Mayor Spire.
Yes.
Uh, do we have an update on the fire damage properties in Trenton?
I do. We've been busy. Um. So just briefly, uh. Two oh eight West and a couple of these are not fire damage. They're just decrepit, but. Two oh eight West Chestnut, um, all the defendants have been served. None of them have filed an answer. Um, we uh. Have defaults entered against all the defendants. We have a list pending on the property to prevent transfer because. When we actually started the case, uh, the defendants were trying to offload the property for like. Two thousand dollars to some company. Out west, um, so we put the brakes on that. Um, we're in the process of filing a motion for entry of default judgment. That should be happening. Within the next month or so. Um, two eleven West Chestnut. Actually owned by a defendant that lives in Saginaw. And despite the fact that them denying that they lived there, the tax bills keep going there and. There's no change of address on file. In any event, that defendant has been served. We just got the proof of service back um, from posting. Um, that complaint, um, so our next step on that one is seeking a default. Um, and then we'll be moving for entry of default judgment on that one. Uh, six oh three Williams. Um. Defendant has been served on that one. We have a motion for entry of default judgment set for. November twenty fifth. So we'll have that one taken care of. Um, eight thirteen North Barien, that one is gonna be a little bit more tricky. That one is actually in probate right now. Um, I spoke with the, the estate's attorney who indicated. Basically, the uh, estate doesn't have any money. Um, I contacted Krista Kraus at the land bank to see if they'd be interested in taking the property and they are. The problem is there's. Roughly just shy of. Three thousand dollars in delinquent taxes on the property and the land bank can't take it while there's still. Delinquent taxes on the property, so. We need to figure that out, but. Overall. Based on my conversation with Krista, they're interested in taking it, but. We just have to figure out that one little hiccup. Um, it would be good to get it in the land bank's hands. Because then, you know, we'll be assured that they'll be able to deal with the property and demo it and then turn it around. Um, without us having to invest money into it, but. We're still trying to iron that one out, so we're making headway on, on uh, the remaining property zone. We'll keep you updated as we get demolition orders. Um, on the remaining ones. And then also, I, I can't remember if it's two oh eight or two ten West um, Mulberry Street. Where we had a fire several years ago. That's owned by the treasurer's office, county treasurer, and they have that on their list to be torn down. So it should be torn down, I think, this year.
Do you have any questions for Attorney Harpess?
Alright, do I have a motion?
Uh, Attorney Colin, uh, on that three oh six oh three.
Yes.
All the stuff that's off along the street that's going up the street. Commenting about can that be? Cleaned? Put back on the property with the houses?
Well, as far as what the city can do for cleanup, I mean, whether or not. We Elmers guys have, have time to do that is one thing. I mean, what I'm gonna do as part of our order that we're gonna get is gonna be an abatement for the entire property, so. You know, demo the house and, and clean up all the garbage, but in the interim. I mean, I'll, I'll leave it to Scott and Elmer to see if we have staff that can. I was hoping this would go a little faster to be gone already, but.
It looks like.
There's a more sinking problem over in that precinct five.
Now that looks like it now.
Yep. Kevin Miller. The summary I just sent you.
Alright, do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four forty for the M dot agreement?
So move.
Before. Attorney Harpess.
Man, it's a good thing I came tonight.
The Colin Hartley Show.
Yeah. So this is just, um, i- if council uh, recalls. Um, we have a, um, we're participating in a federal program that's administered by M dot. Um, as part of the uh, highway bridge replacement rehabilitation program. It's a um. In that program, the cost of the project is covered ninety, ninety percent with um. Uh, federal and state funding, and then the city covers the remaining ten percent. So our, our contribution to this is gonna be about sixty four thousand, seven hundred and twenty five dollars. Um, the resolutions before you, because the contract. Uh, from M dot requires a resolution to approve it. Um. And uh, so this is basically for the bridge rehab project. And uh, I've gone through the contract. It's pretty standard. Happy to answer any questions.
And this is gonna address seven different bridges?
That is my understanding, yes. They're all the, the, they identify structures as. Numbers, um, but uh, it will take care of. Uh. The one at East Erie Street over the south branch of the Kalamazoo River. Um.
The one over the mill race.
Yeah, there's East Erie Street over the north branch of the Kalamazoo River. Uh, the one that Cass Street over the Kalamazoo River. Hannah Street over the east branch of the Kalamazoo River. Uh. Clinton Street over the Kalamazoo River, Eaton Street over the Kalamazoo River, so all of those are gonna be addressed. As part of the project.
Any questions for Attorney Harpess?
It's the dam removal over the.
I'm sorry.
Council member French.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Mayor Spire.
Yes.
Future agenda items. Are there any?
Um. Yeah, man. Um, I have prepared and sent to the clerk already for your next meeting, the annual. Um, publicly funded health insurance opt out that we need to do before the end of the year. Um, so that'll be on for your next agenda and then um. On for discussion approval, uh, we did get responsive to the. City manager RFP, so those will be in your packet with the tabulation for your next meeting.
By Jim.
Yep, so I was gonna bring that up. Um, Director Clark. I believe we were looking at the next study session to begin at six P M.
Let him marry your question. Thanks.
The twenty fifth, twenty fourth.
Twenty eighth, I believe.
Twenty eight.
Twenty eighth is Thanksgiving, so no, not the. The twenty fifth is a Monday.
Twenty fifth.
Right.
I give you twenty, yeah.
So. You will get a notification that study session will begin at six P M. And not at six thirty.
You're gonna see.
No. So we'll do the preliminary budget at that time, and if we need extra time after that, then maybe we'll need to. Schedule an extra study session. We have your questions.
And we'll invite the newly elected council people to attend that study session.
Yep, exactly.
At six.
Yeah.
Any other future agenda items?
You know, I appreciate the updates regarding the fire, uh, the homes that have been uh, damaged by fire. Is there something I know on our main stretch coming into Albion? I noticed that there is a demolition on E D Street. Two, two or two properties, so um. Maybe just an update on the recent demolitions in Albion or.
Okay, those are being done by the treasurer's office, the same one that from Mulberry Street. That's why I'm pretty sure that one's gonna be done this year too. I can't remember how many they had on their list, but they had quite a few.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's positive news, so we want that to be shared.
I am so glad those are coming.
I thought they were going to fall before the demolition occurred because they were.
Public comments. If there's anybody in the gallery that would like to stand in the dress council. We may do so at this time. Come forward, give us your name and address and free minutes of yours.
Seeing there, like I say, welcome to the students. I think this is their best goes class. Yes, and you have. Uh, you're following directions. Are there questions for us? Yeah, no. After, after. No. They weren't, I know there weren't going to be, so.
Do we have a city manager's report?
Uh, I would just like to say to everyone again, thank you for allowing me to serve the community for the last twenty five years. Um, as a child, I always wanted to be a police officer and a firefighter. Didn't know I could actually do that as a career. Um, completely enjoyed working here. Um. People sometimes ask me which one I like better, police or fire. I can't give that answer. I've loved both those jobs and uh, it's just been great that I've been able to do that for the last twenty five years. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Indeed.
Council member comments.
So just to follow on that, I've, I've been the city attorney for thirteen years and I've worked with. Scott since he was a lowly lieutenant. When I started and, and he's been the city manager, the. Code enforcement director, the de facto I T director for the city and. I don't even know how many other roles and. Planning director, yeah. Um. And I don't wanna say we talk on a daily basis, but. Pretty close, so over thirteen years, so I wanna say, uh. I think I speak for everybody here, Scott. It's been an absolute pleasure. Working with you. Uh, you're, you're one of my good friends, but you're, you're an excellent. Uh, police chief and a fire chief and a, a great leader and I'm. It's absolutely terrible to see you go, but I understand and we wish you the best. Thank you. Thanks.
Councilman French.
And I've had the joy of working with, and I think Len too, because we were here in two thousand and ten. Um, working with you, Scott, for, for a long time and uh, whether it's. Uh, at parade functions or downtown uh, festivals or just walking the street, driving along, uh, your uh. Your personality and your willingness to engage with, with everybody in a positive. Uh, way uh, has been a benefit to our city for as long as we've been here, and I thank you for your service and I wish you the best of luck. Um, and don't be a stranger. I think there's some board positions we could put you in.
Heard about they have planning commissioner already, so.
Mayor Brandon Jackson.
Yes, I just wanna thank you for when you came down and. Talked to the youth and explained to them what it really was to become a city manager. And then also you explained the whole system. I think you kind of explained that to all of us better than how we were taught. Thank you. So I just wanna tell you thank you and they appreciate you.
I too would like to say thank you and you know, all of the through the years I wasn't uh. In this position on in ten, but I've seen you learn and grow through the years and. I guess my request to you is to pass your knowledge along. Especially, you know, to those who have been here for twenty five years, as well as technology. We can always depend on you to come and fix the problems, so we want that to continue, so.
You'll have your cell phones.
Saturday morning. When we wanna talk to friends. So.
I told the mayor, I have an LLC, so I'll be available.
Okay, thank you.
We need to break that out with our new uh, city manager, but yeah.
Oh, definitely. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. I will miss your short conversations. I call and I ask. Yep. Yep. I'll bet.
Great, good point. Well, Erin, you got big shoes to fill. Um, but I have every confidence that you can do the job. You have a great team, um, and we can thank Chief Pitt for creating the culture. That has been existence with eighty P S. Uh, for over. Two decades. So we appreciate. You cultivating that to have a place where people enjoy coming to work. Um. Yeah, I'm not even. Yeah, I'm not even, so, um, I just wanna thank you as well, um, for your years of service. The one thing that brings me solace is that you will still be an Albion resident. I will absolutely pick it if you try to sell the house, so at least you know you'll, you'll be around for the foreseeable future.
And I have to say, her husband is the one that hired me twenty five years ago, and I bought my house over twenty five years ago, so.
That was a big year, wasn't it?
It was.
No way that. Alright, uh, seeing no other comments? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Exclu- excuse.
Yeah, I did, she.
Yes, she did, oh, she called me today?
Yeah, we got that, she, well, I texted with her and she said that she would get to hold him today.
She has to had to go to work, they got person, they got personal things going on over there.
They got personal things?
Yeah, that factory has personal things going on, she had to work, and she knew that, that's why she did that.
Um, so, motion to excuse.
So moved.
Well, favor say aye? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.